I'd like to call the Tuesday, December twenty first, two thousand twenty-one Papillion City Council Meeting, order. Ms. Brado, would you please take the role?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Clue, Stube, Ingberg.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have two great celebrations or presentations tonight. First one, Tony, would you come up? Please. There is no doubt that people love Papillion and the Christmas lights. We get questions all year long, when are the lights gonna go on? And when they go off, we get the calls of, would you please leave them on? And I think a lot of people come down to Sarpy because of the lights. And I don't think we can say enough what they do for the community, people's moods, people's spirits. But even you think of just people traveling down, and as long as they're looking at the lights, or pop into a restaurant, or something like that, it's an economic development impact as well, and a lot of community identity. I don't think we've recognized the Parks Department formally in front of the council before for all they do. Well, we got a proclamation, but I think what I'd like maybe first is for Tony just to speak a little bit about it and mention everybody who's here, and then I've got a proclamation I'd like to read.
Thanks, Mayor. Where do I begin with Winter Wonderland? About fifteen years ago, and it's become what it is today. It started out just as a little celebration between the library and city hall, but with a little bit of inspiration, a little bit of magic, I guess, and a lot of dedication to these folks that are back here that I'll introduce. It's become what it is today. I take a lot of pride in it, I think they do too. I'm surprised some of them are actually here to get them out into a council meeting, it's just amazing to me. But I think it means a lot to the Parks Department because this is not what they do. They do other things, they mow, they make flowers look beautiful, they keep the athletic fields in great condition. And then to switch gears and have them do this, it's something very special. I think the residents of the city enjoy it, I know I do, my granddaughters do, and that means a lot to me. So if you wouldn't mind, I'd read off who we have here.
I invite them up there and then we'll read the proclamation.
Oh, okay.
As you read your names.
I told them I'd get them.
I know.
Casey Ballou, Doug Dickle, I don't know if Doug's here tonight, Bob Bojan, Ron Bowen, Preston Bradley, Dan Bragden, Mike Cunningham, John Savillikas, Matt Savillikas, Aiden Kister, Dave Clusaw, Dustin Kosha, John Fredz Jr., Rocky Lemme, Rocky's homesick, Chuck Paul, Mikey Simmons, Cam Stover, CJ Spagera, Betty Selby Sislow, Mona Wilmer, and Tony Gallon. For all of them, thank you for this. This means the world to me, I think it means the world to them, even though they won't tell you anything.
The proclamation I'd like to read, the City of Papillion and the Papillion Community Foundation began the holiday season with the annual Winter Wonderland Celebration throughout the downtown area. Whereas the City Papillion Parks and Facilities Department annually assists with this event by installing the entire light display throughout all of Papillion, which consists of approximately eight hundred thousand lights and requires two months to install. Whereas the annual light displays become synonymous with Papillion's Downtown Winter Wonderland Event, which brings joy and good tidiness to all who attend or visit Papillion in the months that follow. Whereas the Winter Wonderland Lights become a great attraction for not only the residents of Papillion, but also the historic downtown business district. Whereas the Parks and Facilities Department utilizes innovation, imagination, and skill to bring the city a beautiful and fun event that illuminates the holiday season. Now therefore, I am Mayor David Black, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of City Papillion, do hereby recognize the outstanding efforts of the City Papillion's Parks and Facilities Staff for their many hours of diligence and skill in order to bring this beloved display to the City of Papillion, and urge all citizens to pay tribute to them for their efforts that mean so much to so many. I have set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Papillion to be affixed this twenty-first day of December, 2021. Thanks, guys. Ah, he left. Thank you again. Chief Widdit. That still seems strange to hear, Chief?
It kind, it does, it does a bit, I'm not gonna lie.
So another great thing we've got is an oath of office, and I'd like Chief Widdit and Chief Widdit to share a little bit, and then we'll do the oath.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. Lieutenant Goley, come on up. I'm happy to announce the swearing-in promotion of Chris Goley to Police Lieutenant at tonight's City Council Meeting. Just allow me a few minutes to talk about some of Chris's achievements, because they're long and spectacular. Chris joined the Papillion Police Department in two thousand one after serving ten years of active duty through the United States Air Force, where he served as a Korean linguist, performing intelligence and cryptographic duties, both stateside and in the Republic of Korea. While in the Air Force, he earned numerous medals and awards for excellence as a Korean cryptology linguist and expert in North Korean Air Force. Chris continued the trend of excellence with our department, having earned countless letters of commendation and life-saving awards, as well as being the only three-time recipient of our Officer of the Year Award. During his tenure with the Police Department, Chris has served as a patrol officer and K-9 officer, whose dogs have won acclaim and several first-place awards in national competitions in narcotics detection and patrol function. Furthermore, during his lengthy time as a K-9 officer, he elevated to status by earning a K-9 Team Evaluator and Instructor certification. This is a rare accomplishment for K-9 officers and is not easily obtained. In addition to those duties, Officer Goley served as a certified drone pilot, as well as being one of two arson investigators for the department. He is also a very active member of our instructor cadre, having served as an active killer instructor, firearms and marksmanship instructor, and patrol rifle instructor. Lastly, he is a certified instructor for the Sarpy Douglas Law Enforcement Academy, where he assists in various areas. Desiring to further serve his community and work with those who view police as heroes, Chris decided to become a firefighter and join the Papillion Volunteer Fire Department in two thousand and five, where he served as an EMT and a firefighter. In two thousand and ten, he joined the La Vista Fire Department and earned certification as a fire apparatus engineer, along with a paramedic certification from Creighton University. Chris was eventually promoted to the rank of District Chief and performed as the incident commander on numerous fire ground and motor vehicle accidents as a volunteer. As a volunteer firefighter with paramedic duties in two thousand and fourteen, Chris still yearned to bring his medical capabilities to his police profession. This led Chris to initiate discussion about the formation of a tactical medical unit built by police officers who could more quickly provide life-saving measures to act in shooter situations or SWAT operations. Chris worked persistently to bring this concept to Sarpy County, creating the framework for a tactical medical team, gaining support from other department leaders, and assisting in the creation of the corresponding MOU and operation procedures. Eventually, his efforts were rewarded, and the Sarpy County Tactical Medical Team, more commonly referred to as SAC Med, was created. Chris currently leads a unit of fourteen EMTs and ensures training and nationwide best practices are adopted and followed. Officer Goley, along with his paramedic certificate, holds a bachelor's science degree in emergency medical services from Creighton University. He is also bilingual, having taken Korean language studies at Yeon Se University in Seoul, South Korea, where he became proficient in reading, writing, and speaking the Korean language. Lastly, he understands Spanish to a basic level and is an avid photographer, often serving as the department's photojournalist for events and ceremonies. Lastly, and most importantly, Officer Goley is a man of character and puts the interest of the department above his own. He is a tireless worker and seems to always be available for any given crisis or situation, regardless of the day or the time of night. Chris is poised and ready to take this next step in his law enforcement career with the Papillion Police Department, and I actually enjoyed being congratulating him on his promotion to lieutenant.
You wanna do the long oath? I state your name.
I, Christopher Michael Goley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Born and domestic.
Born and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion.
Or for purpose of evasion.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of lieutenant.
Perform the duties of lieutenant.
According to law and the best of my ability.
According to law and the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Nor my member of.
Nor my member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time.
And that during such time.
As I'm in this position.
As I'm in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of.
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
I would like to thank the City Council, whose members, some of them I've worked with over the years, had the opportunity, thank you for your support. Mayor, thank you for support. I'd also like to thank Chief Widdit and Deputy Chief Orchard for their mentorship over the years. In the back, you're gonna see a lot of guys in uniform, who I am honored to call my friends, and who, when I say guys, I mean guys and gals, who I'm honored to call my friends and have always had my back, and I've learned a lot from every single one of them. I've learned something. And so I would like to thank you guys for coming and showing your support. You've been with me every step of the way over the years. A heartfelt thank you to everyone. I'd like to call Corporals Borman and Corporal Gussman up front please. Corporal Gussman was my field training officer, and Corporal Borman was my, he was the predecessor as this FOB president, so they both showed me the ropes, and so I think it's fitting that. I'll get it.
I figured the one time we bend down, we could smack heads.
Corporal? Do you remember how it goes?
I've never had lieutenant bars, but I can't seem to get through your collar stay.
Thank you, Corporal. Yes. Chief?
Can you do it?
I absolutely, I can do, I can try.
Look at that. Ah, look at that. Congratulations. Yeah. As long as I don't go buck ninety, I'm good. Congratulations. Ms. Powers, administrative's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Black, and again, congratulations Lieutenant Goley and also to the Parks Department. These are all examples of small-town feel and feels-like-home, it's because of everything you guys do and what you dedicate to the communities, so again, thank you, everyone. And to continue the night of congratulations, I also want to congratulate the Landings' own customer service representative, Margot Juarez. Margot was sworn in as the newest member of the Omaha Public School Board on Monday, December thirteenth. She was selected to fill the vacant seat for Sub-District Eight. So thank you, Margot, for your community service, both to the Papillion community and your neighborhood community. And in case you hadn't heard, Santa has partnered with Recreation and Library Departments this year. The Landing, excuse me, the Landing and the Library have hosted several events with Santa in the month of December. And in case you know of some littles that still need to get their last-minute request in to Santa, he will be at Child Watch and Todd Time tomorrow, and the Fifty-Five Plus Club on Thursday. You're never too young to let Santa know what you need, right? And then just a couple of quick reminders, City Hall will be closed on Friday, December fourteenth, and again, on Friday, December thirty-first, an observation of Christmas and New Years. And finally, I wish you all very merry and happy Christmas and happy new year, and hope you enjoy some time with your family. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Glover. Do you have any proponents or opponents? Mr. Sunday, did you have an item you wanted to pull? C four, okay. Any council discussion? Please vote on everything except C four.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Clue, Ingberg, seven days, zero nights.
Motion passes. Next is item C four, Resolution R twenty-one zero two-two-five. A resolution to approve an extension to listing agreement with NP Dodge for property in the Papillion Business and Technology Park. Sir, a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-one zero two-two-five. Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Council discussion, Mr. Sunday.
I just wanted to have everybody here, how long it's been listed with NP Dodge, how many sales we've had during that time. From my reading, it's been listed now for six years, and we had a sale in two thousand eighteen for the family ER, and that's all I know about. I might, there might be something I don't know about, that's why I wanted to ask. That, I'm not being critical, but that doesn't seem like a real inspiring record of sales in the last six years. So that's why I wanted to just discuss whether we want to stay this year or not, or...
And your recollection is right, that would be about the right period of time, and so this one more renewal then would take it about at the same amount, it might be slightly longer, but he's about the third problem, well, since I've been in office, it's the third agent that we've had. I believe we started with Mr. Daley, I forget what firm he was at at the time, and then Trent Magid, and his office had it for a period of time. During those two ten years, there was one sale made, and that was to Black, what was Black Hills Energy. And then it was not actively being marketed from our perspective, and then that's when we switched again to Mr. Hartman. And probably, he's probably done most of, most active marketing of any agent we've had. Your recollection of the one transaction is accurate. With all of the agents, the general philosophy of the council and the city has been to turn down almost everything that comes along. And I'll probably look to Mr. Ingberg to clarify if I'm wrong, because he was on the council when we acquired that land, but the general philosophy we've operated under is we don't necessarily want to compete against the private market. So if somebody can come to Papillion and buy private land, we want them to do that, we don't want the government competing against them. Where we want to try to use it if, as if we can use it as our economic development tool to recruit businesses. And so like, Black Hills Energy was actually gonna go to Council Bluffs, and we were leveraged, leveraged that land to bring them here. And then the hospital didn't have another place either, and they wouldn't have been here. So we tried to, we're pretty selective and we turn a lot away, so part of that's on us. We have had some recent discussions, nothing formally, but just informally amongst council. Has the market changed a little bit? We know office and technology is probably now more on the three-seventy corridor, where in the mid-seventies, I think it was viewed to be at the tech park. So is the type of businesses we've been directing them to go look forward, look for, are those really the businesses that have come there, or do we maybe need to rethink that a little bit? And I think that will be a discussion we'll probably want to have over the next year, of kind of what is our philosophy of the business and technology park. But, Mr. Ingberg, you've got the most history with the tech park, just for educational, anything to add or share?
I think you pretty much summed it up, Mayor. Initially, the reason why we got into the area was because we were discovering there were multiple businesses that wanted to locate in Papillion or Sarpy County generally, and nobody really had set aside any property for business park activity at all. The original philosophy was to create an area that would not service your normal day-to-day business opportunities, at least not initially. There would be clean energy types of things, such as IT services and white-collar services, if you want to put it that way. And that's really who moved in there, InfoUSA was there for a long period of time. And we, you were correct, we did not want to compete with private industry. We wanted to try to stimulate private industry to begin looking at setting aside land to have available for businesses, and that was kind of the seed, to get that started. And the goal always was, twenty-five, thirty years ago, thirty years ago, I guess now, when we started, it was to have all the infrastructure and the additional power and additional data that would be needed over the years, and do so in such a way that we get to the point where it was all paid for by development of the land, not by taxpayers. And we've done that, we did that several years ago. And so now, everything that we sell is, we can afford to continue to be selective if we choose, because there's no cost to us, everything's in place. But I think it's also important we discuss if that needs to change, considering where we're at now.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Sunday?
No, I'm gonna vote for it, I just wanted to have this discussion.
Well, I think it's valid, it's kind of like the auditor discussion too, you like who you're working with and you're comfortable and they know you, but periodically, it's good to get a different perspective in as well. Mr. Mumgarth, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm gonna thank Councilman Sunday for bringing up the question. I'll tell you outright that I don't think that the situation we see ourselves in is the fault of the listing agent, and so no, I'm also gonna vote for it. But I came on the council just briefly after the business park was created, and I've always been behind the philosophy that it is a business park, and that's our goal, and that's the best thing for Papillion. I know not too long ago, we turned down quite a substantial retail proposal. I've driven by there and looked at it and thought, oh, did we make a mistake? I don't know. I was against going at this point toward retail, I still am. I still think that the philosophy of preserving land for, you know, businesses is the best thing for Papillion, although I recognize that times have changed, and with the growth of Papillion, there are plenty of other places for businesses to go to. So it's worth asking the question every year, are we going in the right direction? And I look forward to having discussions about that question again next year, and I thank, again, thank Councilman Sunday for bringing that up.
And just to close out the discussion, I think it's important to note too that the broker that we're approving the agreement on is the one that brought that large retail opportunity to us, and I think he's the one then that forced us to start thinking about what do we want there or not, or not there. So he's helped guide us through that discussion a little bit too, so I do think that'll continue to be an active conversation over the next year. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Clue, Ingberg, seven days, zero nights.
Motion passes, we have no items for first or second reading. Third reading, item F one, Resolution R twenty-one zero four-two. A resolution to approve twenty-twenty-two trash hauling permits. And just like with fireworks and what we do every year here, if there's no objection, the resolution handles all of them in one fell swoop. If for any reason somebody wants to handle one as a one-off, I'd suggest maybe we'd handle that like the consent, pull that one off and then work with the rest of the group. So the current motion is for all five. A is Abe's Trash Service, B is Gretna Sanitation, C is Waste Connections of Nebraska Doing Businesses Papillion Sanitation, D is Waste Management of Nebraska, and E is Waste Services of Nebraska. Sir, a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-one zero two-four-two. Motion by Councilman Jaworski. Second by Councilman Mumgarth. Gonna call for proponents, but I did have a council member ask if each of the trash services maybe would come up, introduce yourself, and let us know about how many trucks that you run in Papillion, and then if there's any other questions from council they could ask too. So is there a representative from Abe's here? If you'd just come up real quick and introduce. It's nice to put names to faces.
My name's Josh Christensen, I work at Abe's Trash. We have roughly three trucks that come into Papillion on a regular basis, but we have, like, construction jobs, where we have roll-off trucks that come in and out, you know, depending on what jobs there are that we're doing, I guess, so.
Appreciate that, thank you. Gretna Sanitation. Welcome.
Thank you, Andy Harpenout, Gretna Sanitation, I'm the owner. We have a couple, two, three trucks come to town, residential, commercial, recycling.
Thank you very much. Waste Connections, Papillion Sanitation. Hello?
How you doing? I'm Trey Angs, District Manager of Papillion Sanitation. Currently, we have about forty trucks at any given time that run in Papillion Sanitation, or in Papillion.
Thank you. Waste Management.
Good evening, David King, Route Manager for Waste Management. We have around sixteen roll-off trucks, and three residential and commercial railroads, and roughly five to fifteen trucks, depending on the routes, coming into Papillion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Waste Services. Waste Services here? Alright. Do we have any opponents? Council discussion, Mr. Mumgarth.
Yeah, I just wanted to raise a question about the, our trash hauling processes. It's my recollection that sometime in the past, the Public Works Committee directed staff to start gathering information that would help us decide whether our current processes of licensing more than one operator is the best thing, or whether we should move toward having one trash hauler permittee in the city. And I just wanted the staff to give us an update as to what's the status of that review is.
Ms. Powers.
Thank you for the question, Councilman Mumgarth. We did work at getting some of that information, and we put some additional information on the permits, but we were still missing some information. But I will say that what we have will have to redo, the consolidation of two of the trash haulers would cause us to have to kind of relook at that, and we'll take a look at that.
Okay. Several of us were here years and years ago, when it was initially proposed that we would join the ranks of our surrounding cities and go to one licensed trash hauler. We did, we at that point decided not to do that, but I think a lot has changed in the meantime, and this consolidation that you mentioned, I think has several reasons that it might be beneficial to the taxpayers to move in that direction. So I just want to make sure that that subject stays on the table. I'm not gonna be a member of the Public Works Committee the next year, so I, to all the people that will be, I just want that subject to remain on the table and to be a subject that we continue to move forward, to see if now is the time that we make the change.
Sometime this fiscal year, we'll update, we'll get that updated date, and actually have a meeting on that topic for the Public Works Committee.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Sunday.
My recollection is that we discussed possibly whittling it down to one or two.
Right.
I don't think we had settled yet on just one.
No, that's what's gotta go to the committee then, is what that final recommendation would be. Correct. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover. Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Dorski, Kluk, Ingberg. Seven A zero Nace.
Motion passes. All permits are approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Item F two, resolution R twenty one zero two three four, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to prove a Class C liquor license for Olive Garden Holdings LLC doing business as the Olive Garden Italian Restaurant Number sixty four sixty, seventy five oh six Olson Drive, Papillion, Nebraska, six eight oh four six, and a manager application for Kimberly B Stony's. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Is the applicant here? You want to come up and introduce yourself? And we don't have a real long agenda, so you want to give a little bit of a commercial?
Oh, why not? So I apologize. I have um, been working on training and hiring our new hires for the new location, so I'm losing my voice. Um, so I've worked for the Olive Garden for about four years, going on five. And I can't count on my fingers and toes and, and you live on my body of how many people have came up to me asking, when are you gonna get a location in Papillion? And I'm like, if I could make it happen, I would. So this is like a dream come true. Um, we are very, very excited. Something that I know the company has um, looked forward to. Uh, and we are excited to be a part of this community. I come from a small town. So um, me being able to open this restaurant and um, you know, really get out to this community makes, makes me feel like I'm at home. So I'm very excited. I've already met so many gracious people. I know I've reached out to you personally and I am really looking forward to getting the, uh, getting to know the community.
So, thank you very much. Welcome.
So we were originally slated to open for January thirty four, uh, thirty first. However, uh, we have some equipment issues and they pushed us back to uh, January seventh. Uh, we are doing a soft opening, uh, or not doing a soft, uh, yeah, February seventh, I'm sorry. And we are doing a soft opening, uh, starting on uh, February fourth. And so we'll be doing a soft opening the fourth, fifth, sixth to uh, people invited to the community. We're gonna get ourselves out there.
Thank you very much. Do we have any opponents? Close public hearing, a motion to approve resolution R twenty one zero two three four. Motion by everybody. I'll give it to Ms. Kluk, second by Councilman Ingberg. Um, any other discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Dorski, Kluk, Ingberg. Seven A zero Nace.
Motion passes. Welcome to the community. F three, resolution R twenty one zero two three seven, a resolution to prove the SRAM one oh eight sewer and water connection agreement. Is there a motion to approve resolution R twenty one zero two three seven? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Welcome. You state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my name is Mark Johnson. Address is a hundred and fourteen forty West Center Road in Omaha. I'm appearing tonight on behalf of the applicant, Celebrity Homes. And John Coolidge from Lampard Neerson is also here. We're here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Ms. Kluk, did you have something?
More general comments than specific, so you're probably good. Um, as I looked at this, I'm probably more with respect to item number six. It became very apparent as we're doing our planning and as we're growing, there's a couple residents out there that their homes have driveways that go on to one of our collector streets, onto SRAM streets. So I think maybe I'm talking more to Mark with the challenge that are we doing something about this so that our main roads are going to be protected as we move forward? Is there easements being looked at when we're talking with our developers? How's that going? Can we continue to do that? And is there a way for us to move forward without some of these driveways going on to these main collector roads?
And you're right, I prompted you too soon because it probably is six, but it's all related. So Mr. Sturzmann, do you want to go ahead and comment?
I just, I'm concerned that at some point this could become a safety issue if we get too many driveways. And I, I recommend, I understand it's not related to yours, but it is a planning issue.
Sure. So I'm Mark Sturzmann, Planning Director. Um, the, the property that I believe you're referring to is there's an existing house at the northwest corner of this development that fronts onto SRAM Road. Uh, that property is not part of this application, uh, but the developer did uh, or is dedicating an easement to provide uh, a future driveway access into the internal streets from that property that fronts onto SRAM Road. Um, this, this, this developer doesn't control that, that property and so we can't use this process to eliminate the driveway onto SRAM Road, uh, which I think is your point. And, and I would agree that from a, a, a planning perspective, we would like to avoid having individual driveways off of our, our T R road network. Um, but with the dedication of that easement, if there is an opportunity for that driveway to go away in the future, there is a plan in place and a, and an easement in place where we could um, extend the driveway from the internal streets of this development to provide access to that lot and remove that driveway from the material.
So if that happens and there's an easement, does that road then become property of the city that we would be maintaining? Or would it be considered a private driveway for the residents on that home?
Yeah, it would be a, a private driveway. Uh, the easement would allow the, the, um, that driveway to be uh, within an outlaw that, that, that this um, plat is dedicating for, I think it's for stormwater detention. But it'll, it'll have an opportunity for a private driveway to extend through it.
Thank you.
Did that answer the question? Thank you. And again, for the purpose of minutes, probably more appropriate for that discussion to be on item F six. Um, so thanks for that reminder. Um, any other council discussion? Please vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Sunday?
I, I don't want to belabor this, but I, I still do not believe that this development in its current configuration is in our city's best interest. So, and I don't expect to sway any other votes, but I, I'm not gonna vote for it tonight.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Dorski, Kluk, Ingberg. Six days, one day by Councilman Sunday.
Motion passes. Related item is F four, resolution R twenty one zero two three eight. Resolution to prove the SRAM one oh eight subdivision agreement. Is there a motion to approve resolution R twenty one zero two three eight? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Jaworski. Uh, any proponents or opponents? We'll note that the applicant's still here. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Dorski, Kluk, Ingberg. Six days, one day by Councilman's uh, Sunday.
Motion passes. Also related, F five, resolution R twenty one zero two three nine. Resolution to prove a request for a final plat for the property legally described as part of the northwest quarter of section four. Township thirteen north, range twelve east of the six P M. Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southwest corner of Turkey Road and SRAM Road. The applicant, Celebrity Homes, SRAM one oh eight, phase one. Is there a motion to approve resolution R twenty one zero two three nine? Motion by Councilman Kluk, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Dorski, Kluk, Ingberg. Six days, one day by Councilman Sunday.
Motion passes. F six, ordinance nineteen twenty seven, also related. An ordinance to approve a request for a change of zone from A G Agriculture to R four multifamily residential for the property legally described as part of the northwest quarter. Section four township thirteen north, range twelve east of the six P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located on the southwest corner of Turkey Road and SRAM Road, the applicant, Celebrity Homes, SRAM one oh eight. Is there a motion to approve ordinance nineteen twenty seven? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Glover. Um, staff is asking for a motion to amend ordinance nineteen twenty seven uh, because the developer did choose to phase the request um, after the second reading of the ordinance. Um, so is there a motion to amend ordinance nineteen twenty seven to add a section to provide for phased zoning and to renumber the remaining sections thereafter set forth in the red line version of the packet? Move by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Kluk. There any proponents or opponents on the motion to amend? Any council discussion on the motion? Please vote on the motion to amend.
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Dorski, Kluk, Ingberg. Seven A zero Nace.
Motion passes. Motion is amended, so any discussion on the motion is amended. Please vote on the motion as amended.
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Dorski, Kluk, Ingberg. Six days, one day by Councilman Sunday.
Motion passes. Item F seven, ordinance nineteen fifty seven, an ordinance to approve the redefining of ward boundaries due to the twenty twenty census data released by the U S Department of Commerce Bureau of Census. Is there a motion to approve ordinance nineteen fifty seven? Motion by Councilman Sunday, second by Councilman Gaines. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Dorski, Kluk, Ingberg. Seven A zero Nace.
Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items. There were no committees that met, so no committee reports. But I do want to make a note, um, you should have gotten a letter with the new committee assignments for next year. Um, just as a reminder, we reorganize committees once a year this time of year. Um, it's the whole council reorganization. We did council president last meeting and, at last regular meeting and then committees for uh, this one. We have four standing committees just for the public. We have Public Works, Public Safety, Public Finance and Administration and um, Works, Safety, Facilities, Finance and Administration. Then we have two ad hoc committees for audit and golf. Um, general philosophy I've always had is on the standing committees, make sure that there's at least every ward represented. Um, that, that every committee retains at least one or two members who were on it before. So we keep some of the institutional knowledge of the discussions, but always get one or two new members on there so we get a new train of thought and mix it up. And try to not have the same four members on any committees. That way everything is mixed up from discussion and relationships. Um, also try to balance it between elections. So I don't want a whole committee that's up for election or a whole committee that's not up. And so I think it's balanced this year on every committee, two of the individuals are up, seats are up for election and two are not. So a pretty good balance I think is able to reach this year. And then I, in doing all of that, I also try to honor every individual council member's request. So every request that did come in, um, I was able to honor those and can meet all those other standards. Um, so that's the committee assignments. If you have any questions, let me know. Um, there will be a couple of uh, committee assignments coming up soon in January, I believe. Any comments from the floor? No comments from the floor? Any council comments? Mr. Sunday?
Thank you. Um, I don't know. I know that you shared, uh, Mr. Mayor, the uh, the news story that was on the other night about the house here in Papillion where the owner was harboring over some five hundred animals inside. And uh, I couldn't help but notice in watching that news story that they showed the exterior of the house, which really looked deplorable. It really did. And I know there's some other homes around Papillion that are in same or similar condition. And I would just like every council member to start thinking about what we can do a, as governing officials to maybe try to put an end to homeowners and landlords who allow their properties to go into that state of disrepair. Because if we're gonna ban things like RVs, which we have, because it's an eyesore, then, then let's be real about what's really an eyesore and what really drives down our home values in a, in a neighborhood. And it's that. And, and I, I for one, and I know Luanne's on board too, uh, we want to put a stop to that here in Papillion.
And on, and on that note, I would just note, uh, Ms. Kluk's been uh, doing some research of, over the last month too, about property maintenance codes uh, that Papillion does not have. And I will be making a referral to the Public Safety Committee uh, to look at the property maintenance code, the standard international one, and then see what we need to do to adopt that specifically to Papillion. And then if there's a committee recommendation to bring that forward, it'd come out of the Public Safety Committee. So we'll be making that referral. So thank you for that. Any other council discussion or comments? Right, um, last couple of weeks, um, Sewer Wastewater Agency met. Um, as uh, as the pipe is starting to be put in the ground and as development's occurring in that area, it's starting to, uh, the market is starting, I think, to define what phase one of the new sewer area should be. Um, about four or five years, about four years ago, um, we, as all the individual bodies in the sewer agency, um, did adopt phase one A and phase one B, where we're gonna invest the sewer infrastructure and open up. Um, but as development is starting to occur, um, it's starting to challenge some of the fringes of that. So there may be a slight redefinition of what phase one is. Uh, that'll be going to the committee administrators do, and the planning are doing a lot of work on that. Um, good news is there's a lot of attention in that area and, and developers looking at that. Um, we also have had a number of dare graduations and um, had the honor last night of going to the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council and they gave a citizens uh, of the year award uh, to an individual that's supporting them a lot too. So that's a great organization and appreciate the police department for being the liaison there. I also want to reiterate what Ms. Powers said about Margot, um, who is a part-time employee of the landing. Um, but she's a City of Omaha resident and she was just appointed to the Omaha School District, uh, to the school board. Um, so our employees are pretty active, so it's a nice thing to see. And then just want to give the rec staff a uh, um, uh, kudos. If people are not aware, they have started a program called Rock Steady Boxing. Um, it's a franchise program that a Papillion resident started who has Parkinson's disease. And it's a boxing program specifically for Parkinson's disease. And um, and uh, the coach of that program actually now works for the landing and the landing has taken over that program. So when we think about unique programs for community wellness, that's a real unique thing that Papillion's got that no other community in the area has. Uh, so Tracy, thanks for uh, innovation and, and doing those types of things, making a real difference in people's lives. Um, I don't think there's anything else. Any other council comments? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Dorski, Kluk, Ingberg. Seven A zero Nace.
We are adjourned.